Mr. Oliveras has the sensitivity to understand the needs of the people that he's going to be approving grants to. Also, right now, he's working hand in glove with United Cerebral Palsy, and it has come to my attention that the reason that there will not be a problem with parking there is because anybody who applies to live in that facility will be required to use UCP and only UCP caregivers. This, as far as I understand, is a violation of California law. It's unfair, it's unjust. This man should not be given the responsibility of making decisions when he's working hand in glove with people who take illegal actions like this. I don't think that it really is going to reflect the interests of Glendale to put this man on the board again. Thank you.
The speaker, Herbert Molano.
Good evening. My name is Herbert Molano, Mayor David Weaver, members of the City Council, city staff. I have attended many CDBG meetings. Oftentimes, I found myself as being the only speaker, and in some occasions, I have actually seen some of the members of the CDBG fast asleep during the meetings, except for Mr. Oliveras. I've done often come here to contradict two individuals who generally are coming forth to bring relevant information, but in the case of Mr. Oliveras, from my personal experience having him and observing him, I saw an individual who appeared to me quite concerned, ask relevant questions. The problem is, is that we don't know what the overall clear objectives of the CDBG are. Unfortunately, we get to evaluate projects and programs, but we don't have a cohesive overall strategic plan to say these are the things that we want to achieve. And oftentimes, the public just doesn't know the whole picture, but just from the personal observation that I have seen, it's not often that I find myself in agreement with Mr. Weaver. But, you know, let's call a man for what he does. The gentleman has shown probably more interest than most of the members on that board, and from what I perceive this gentleman, perhaps he can bring a significant amount of value in the next few years. But the questions that have been brought to you, I think, should be answered. Anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
That's all the cards have. All I'll say is I know Mr. Oliveras for more than 10 years, and he's a man of high integrity. I find it personally insulting that anybody sits here tonight and tries to defame him the way I've heard tonight by a tag team match. And for one of another way of saying it, that CDBG recommends to the City Council, the City Council makes the decision, and you all know it. It's not done by the CDBG. They make recommendations, they meet all year, and they put in more hours and more effort than any group there is. And only four people out of 207,000 people applied for the position, and of those four, the one that spent most time on here is attacked here tonight. I find it very insulting. Okay, is there a motion? Mr. Manukian?
Yes. I want to reiterate the point you made, Mr. Mayor, and that's that the CDBG committee makes recommendations, and we are the ones who approve the final funding. I would like, I do have high respect for Mr. Oliveras, and I will make the motion to appoint him. However, I do, I do want to ask from the city attorney the issue that was just brought up in terms of UCP only allowing UCP service providers to service that, those clients. I don't want, I don't, you don't need to answer that.
I was just gonna say, I don't.
Okay. And I would like that to come back in a report. And from what I understand, that is, that is not legal in terms of the California laws concerned, so if you could get back to me on that, I would appreciate it. And I have already moved the item at 3B.
You second that and then make a comment?
I'll second it with a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have known Mr. Oliveras for several years, and I have only found him to be a gentleman of utmost integrity. The general issue of conflict of interests among commissioners and other city officials is certainly a valid point. However, I am going to trust that Mr. Oliveras, as well as any other of the CDBG or other city commissioners, who find themselves in a conflict of interest situation, or even a potential conflict, or a situation in which a conflict, in which there may be an appearance of a conflict, would consult our city attorney and obtain appropriate counsel from them. So I would be, I would be supporting Mr. Oliveras at this time.
And maybe we could go a step further. Anybody that does apply, because we asked for it to be, we circulated again, that it goes through the city attorney's office for clearance. Any questions, if you saw anything that stands out, that you give a clearance before the city clerk gives us a list. Maybe that would help. I don't know if we have to get into this with every commission, and every commissioner we appoint, that the city attorney has to go through their history and their background and clear them.
The only thing I would, yeah.
The city attorney has enough to do.
I know, I would just add, it would be a difficult process to follow because they don't really fill out their Form 700 until they've been appointed. So it makes it difficult to sort of run that check.
So we, we trust that the people, okay, Mr. Herbert.
Ms. Mayor, in this case, you have a specific policy that doesn't necessarily relate to the commissions, and it's got a dual protection, and one is if, for whatever reason, they forget, they didn't remember, they end up acting on an action, then the group actually isn't eligible for any funding. So you've got dual protection. And with respect to other commissioners, they can't rely on the city attorney's advice to give them clearance. He can only advise you. They have to rely on the FPPC, and the, and the onus and responsibility is on the individual.
Okay, I hope everybody understands that.
Well, the city attorney cannot advise a commissioner on a potential conflict issue?
If asked.
They can, with respect to FPPC, they can't rely on it.
Right, we can provide, I mean, we do provide advice regularly, it's a question of immunization from ultimate liability.
I mean, as, with my situation several weeks ago, you weren't giving me a carte blanche guaranteed opinion.
Right, right.
Only the FPPC can do that. However, you're certainly willing to give them counsel and advice.
Absolutely.
That was my point.
Okay.
Okay, with that, oh gosh, sorry, folks. Okay, with that roll call, please.
Council members. Council members Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye.
And Councilmember Yusefian, who's not here?
Thank you. What is next, please?
Recese's presentation by vector control District's Public Information Officer, Truck Dever.
Okay, and who's, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get it down. So who am I turning to? Oh, staff isn't introducing anybody? Okay, your name for the record before you start.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. My name is Truck Dever, and I'm the Public Information Officer for the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District. I will briefly be providing the first portion of this presentation here tonight. For the members of the council and the audience who are unfamiliar with our services, we are an independent special district. We were formed in 1952 and governed by a Board of Trustees. We provide services to 34 cities within Los Angeles County and sections of unincorporated LA County. We are actually the largest district in the state, covering 1,350 square miles. We service 6 to 8 million people, and we cover 1.08 million parcels. We're funded through an annual benefit assessment, and this year, the benefit assessment stands at $5.58 per parcel. We have offices in Santa Fe Springs and Silmar, and we employ more than 50 full-time personnel. We were formed in order to reduce populations of public health vectors below nuisance levels. We prevent human infection associated with mosquito-transmitted diseases, and prevent the loss of property values and commercial enterprise as a result of vector occurrence and activity. The three vectors that we focus our services on are midges, black flies, and mosquitoes, mosquitoes being the most dangerous and of the greatest concern at this point. As you know, for the past several years, our district has been working aggressively to fight the threat of West Nile virus. We stepped up surveillance of the disease, inspection, and treatment of mosquito breeding sources. We've also implemented a new underground storm drain program, and we've also augmented community outreach and public education program. For several years now, we've collaborated with several other districts to carry out the Wipeout West Nile campaign, and you may have heard our ads and our PSAs on the radio and at your local grocery store. One of the messages we emphasize is that residents can help combat West Nile virus by eliminating backyard water sources where mosquitoes can breed. Some of these sources include old tires, out-of-service swimming pools, containers containing any water, fountains, and given that we have to cover 1.08 million parcels, that's a lot of backyard to cover. So we do ask residents to help us out and spread the word and eliminate any standing water and other breeding sources. Residents can also contact our district and put in a service request, and we'll come out and treat those sources, and we can also provide free mosquito fish. Our district also focuses on treating long-term chronic mosquito breeding sources, and these larger sources are treated on a routine basis. They include reservoirs, channels, and street gutters. Now, here to provide us with a little more information on West Nile virus and the current status of the virus is our Scientific Technical Services Director, Minu Madden.
I thank the mayor and the honorable and the city council for giving us the opportunity to make a presentation here. Just to...
Just repeat your name for the record.
My name, my name is Minu Madden. I'm the Technical Director for Greater LA County Vector Control District. I'll try to make this as simple as possible, the disease cycle, the disease, it's a, it's a complicated disease cycle. The mosquitoes, the natural disease cycle, it circulates between the mosquitoes and wild bird populations. And occasionally, when the natural hosts are not available, either the domestic animals such as horses or human beings become the accidental host. And mosquitoes do have preferences. They would normally bite birds and migratory birds and wild bird, wild resident birds, but they also bite humans and domestic animals. And if you happen to be in the way at the wrong time at the wrong place, a person could get infected. West Nile appeared in USA in the year 2003, and we had 67 cases. I'm not going to go through all the numbers here, but the, in California, it was introduced in 2003. We didn't have very many cases in 2003, but our major outbreak in Southern California was in the year 2004. As you can see statewide, there were 830 human cases, but Los Angeles County took the major brunt. We had a major outbreak here, and in Los Angeles County alone, we had 191 human cases with 28 fatalities, 25 fatalities. Last year, we also had a major outbreak, but the shift, the, the brunt of the disease was up north, in the northern, northern counties. And this year, it's been on a subsidence. We haven't had very many cases this year, but we still have a whole month to go, and this is the most crucial month where we'll have perhaps human cases that may occur. So we haven't had very many cases as of this year. And I just, I don't want to go through all these numbers, but as you can see, there's a lot of work done. It's a very complicated procedure. We test dead birds, we test mosquito samples, we place out sentinel chickens in strategic areas to get samples and test them, and also trap wild resident birds. And they give us an indication as to what the activity is, and it helps us plan our mosquito control program. So this year, you can see how West Nile has distributed throughout the state. We've had 22 counties with West Nile virus activity in the state, with Kern County taking the brunt, Kern County and Sacramento, Yolo Counties taking the brunt of the cases. And as I stated earlier, we have, we do various types of surveillance. I'm not going to go through that. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Well, I'm glad the number of cases is down. You're doing something right.
Right. Nationwide, though, we had 861 cases reported from 29 states with 19 fatalities.
What are the major areas in the United States, northeast, south?
California has had the most activity of West Nile this year.
And next comes where? The north, the south, southeast, or where do you find the next most number of cases?
Here in...
In the United States?
In the United States.
After, after California.
After California. It was Colorado, Utah, North Dakota.
Oh, the Midwest.
Even though we've had many given cases here in California, 800, like in 2004, when we had 800 cases, last year we had 956 cases, but the rate, the rate of incidence per 100,000 population was very, very low. For instance, in California, the rate was three per 100,000 population, whereas, for instance, in Colorado, they had 64 human cases per 100,000 population. And one of the reasons is because California has a very organized mosquito control program. We have about 60 special districts that are committed to doing just mosquito and vector control. So we have a very organized program, and we do our best to prevent human cases.
Very good.
Correct.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Thank you. Okay, what is next, please?
Next is city council and/or staff comments.
Mr. Manukian?
First announcement, I could say, is the sidewalk office hours that I hold the first of every month, I will not be able to hold them over the next two weeks, so it'll be a while before I can be on brand. However, I was supposed to be at, at the Montrose Market last weekend, because next weekend they are closed. I completely missed it, and I wasn't there. I would like to apologize to the Montrose Shopping Park Association. They had everything ready for me, and I was not, and I was not there. My apologies. I will be there, not next Sunday, but the following Sunday, if possible. Second, the Grand View Cemetery was open on Sunday, and me and Mr. Najarian were there. It was, it was very reassuring that the cemetery was open and a number of people showed up. If I'm not mistaken, mistaken, over 1,000 people were there. However, today, I would like to take a moment to commend staff and everyone that was out there, and the staff that came to the conclusion and went through the negotiations to make it possible to open the Grand View Cemetery. I think they did a tremendous job. And everyone that was out there during the four hours that the cemetery was open, I want to thank them for being very humane and very respectful of the people who were there. A number of people were upset as to why it was closed, and they had a number of questions. The way staff responded to everything and to the community and the questions that were asked, the way staff responded was tremendous. I would like to congratulate them on a job well done, and they can all be proud that we've done something that helped the community, that helped some mothers and some brothers and some fathers grieve for their, for the past ones that, since they were not able to do it over the past many months. It was, for me, it was a very important service that we provided to the community. I want to thank the owners as well for coming to the realization that opening the cemetery, opening the cemetery for at least a short while to have the families visit their loved ones is very important. So with that, I'll conclude my comments, and again, congratulate the staff and everyone that was out there, and thank the community for being so orderly and decent after so many tribulations that, that they went through.
I heard nothing but good about it. There was eight city departments out there on Sunday, working on it. If I'm not right, Mr. Starbird, the cemetery will be open again this Sunday? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We're, we're adjusting each Sunday. We're not anticipating as large a crowd as next Sunday, but we'll have plenty of staff out there. We anticipated, again, being open from noon until 4 o'clock. Again, there will not be a water service. We'll have some limited water for drinking purposes, but there won't be any water in the water system. So residents who were there this last Sunday know that, and I, and many of them brought their own containers and brought water in.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Najarian?
Mayor, I would request that this, the following item be placed on the council agenda at the earliest available opportunity. In particular, the, the density waiver for the condominium slash apartment project at 601 West Palm Drive. I think we, after reviewing our previous motion, I think there are some loose ends that we need to tie up in particular with regard to the time deadlines, which, which we neglected to impose on any sort of further activity on that apartment building.
Fine, fine. I have one, again, Dreamia Roses, which is coming up on September 10th. Starts at 4:00, and I would suggest everybody try to be there for, because we're going to have some special moments at the beginning. After all, it's the day before 9/11, so we will be having some special moments there at, at 4:30 when the program starts. I'd like to read a partial list of some of the restaurants we'll have there. I haven't read them before. We'll have Chocolate Box, Bennigan's, Farniente, Milano's, Scarentino's Italian, Baklava Factory, Maruti Ice Cream, Mignon Chocolate, Max's Manila's, New Moon, Red Rib, and Havana Beach Cafe, La Cabana, Porto's Buzz Big Boy, Conrad's, Damon's, Lunchbox, Oakmont Country Club, Mink's, Porter's, Prime Steakhouse, Whole Foods Market, Jose Lito's, Mahara's, Agaric Tequila Imports, Constantino Winery, Saharex, Dish, Donna Maria, Walk Talk, Shaky's, Mexican Grill, and Coca-Cola. Those are some that'll be there if you come. It's $50. And ABC is in Glendale, at Grand View and Flower Street. It'll be a Frank Sinatra tribute, and this is seventh year, and we think it's going to be the best one yet. You can get tickets at the Chamber of Commerce, the Alex Theater, Parks and Recreation downstairs, and now at Ralph's Market, the one on north of Verdugo Road, next to the Arco Station. So, hope you all turn out. You will have a good time. You'll get more than enough to eat. Okay, with that, council comments are closed, and what is next, please?
Next is consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
Okay, we'll be pulling 5B, and with that, Mr. Manukian?
I need to abstain on the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and with that, you moving C and D?
I'll move the rest. Or if someone can move all of it?
Yeah, move them all.
I'll move them all, with the exception of 5B.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes, with abstention on 5A.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian? Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Please write 5B into the record.
Director of Community Development and Housing regarding Los Angeles County Youth Jobs Program at B1 Resolution appropriation of $242,000 for Summer Youth Jobs Program.
One speaker, Barry Allen, two minutes.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I thought that was 5D as in David.
Wait up, wait up.
Is it?
Looks like a B. Looks like a B. You want D?
Yeah, I, the only thing I want on 5D is that I thought that the public should be aware and have some sort of report, even though it's, it's been voted on, as to what the electric and water system cash reserve policies are. I think that's, that's even, even though that has been voted on, I think it's still necessary that that information be made available. Thank you.
Mr. Starbird, we did discuss this during the budget hearings and everything too, didn't we?
Although this is, this is an annual reporting on the status of the, what, cash reserves, not fund balance, but cash reserves.
We discussed reserves considerably.
Right, but, but this is cash reserve and adjustment. We'd be happy to give you a very brief report on it, if that's your wish. Otherwise...
Well, we did move it. I'd like to get 5B out of the way first. There's a motion on 5B.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, on 5B.
Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian? Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Mr. Starbird, would you like to give a brief on 5?
Okay, then let me, let me give a brief report. Let me turn to it here. Pardon me for just a second while I catch up to the reports. This is a recommendation, as GOP is required to report to you on annually, on cash reserves, of which it's recommended that we set aside within the GWP water and electric funds, adequate cash reserves to meet a number of different needs. Those reserves are categorized into operating, contingency, rate stabilization, and a reserve for our gas project. That's where we have actually purchased a gas field, and these are investments for the expansion and purchase of the field. As the report points out, the recommendation is to make adjustments in those reserves, of which operating reserve and contingency are recommended for slight increases. The rate stabilization fund is recommended to be reduced from $10 million, or from $20 million to $10 million due to the rate adjustments for fuel previously made, and there's not as great a need to maintain the $20 million reserve level. Those adjustments are noted in the report, and as recommended by this action, the council approved those newly revised reserve levels.
Which we have done.
That's right.
Thank you. Okay, what's next, please?
Next, next is oral communication discussion is limited. Items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, Mr. Starbird, staff. Home and Glenn Dela, my name is Armand Gorgorian. I'm the Executive Director of Home and Glenn Delara Chapter. We are hosting and organizing our first-ever Friendship Games and Festival for the Glendale Community. Over 500 young athletes of ages 10 and older are invited to take part in this tournament, making these games one of the largest multi-ethnic youth athletic events ever hosted in Glendale. The games will be held at Glendale High School on September 23rd and 24th from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. All nonprofit organizations and athletic groups are invited to participate in chess, volleyball, soccer, table tennis, swimming, and tennis. The goal of these Friendship Games and Festival is to bring together the many cultures in the Glendale community and foster goodwill, create new friendships in a friendly, competitive manner. We want to give the opportunity to the younger generation from different backgrounds to take part in these games and festivities, create unity, and celebrate our diversity in a friendly setting. We anticipate a good turnout for this event and encourage all community-based organizations in Glendale to participate. On both nights, there will be a festival, complete with food, dancing, games, vendors, and live entertainment. We invite everyone in Glendale to participate in the games, festival, and closing ceremony, even if they don't take part in the competition. We invite families to come and watch the different tournaments, and also stay for the festival to enjoy multi-ethnic food, carnival games, and live entertainment. Closing ceremonies for the games will be held on Sunday, September 24th at 5:00 PM at the Glendale High School's main gym. We have invited Glendale High School's drill team and choir to participate in the closing ceremony. We are proud to say that City of Glendale, Glendale Unified School District, and Glendale News Press have endorsed and sponsored this event. For those who are interested, you can either call us at 323-256-2564, or visit our website at www.rara.org. I have to add that City of Glendale's Parks and Recreation staff are helping us in securing teams and different groups for this event. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to...
Good luck on the first annual.
Of course, we sure hope, you will get your invitations in the mail, but we sure hope to see all of you at the closing ceremony. And for additional thing, we are planning on having a celebrity basketball game there.
Oh, forget that.
And we have some recruits from the council, and also Police Department and Glendale Unified School District.
Is nobody on this council over 5'8"?
Well, I think, I think my back's going to be hurting that day.
Well, well, I know that Councilman Manukian has volunteered for that, and...
Table tennis, was it?
He said basketball.
Jeez. Volunteer for chess.
Really, we really want to make this event, an annual event, to have something that all the back, from all the backgrounds, people can gather into these activities.
Send my daughter, she played basketball. Send my daughter, she played basketball.
Can you repeat the number again for?
The number is three two three two five six two five six four. You can call us after two PM.
Armand, I have a question. Obviously, for soccer and volleyball, you need a team, but for some of the individual events, can individuals?
Yes.
Contact and visit your website and enter individually?
We haven't done that yet. We will do it. We will put it on the website. We have just a flyer right now, but as far as we go ahead, we will add on the website. That is why we are asking for the help of Parks and Recreation through them. We are trying to get different groups, different individuals from the tennis classes that the parks have. We distributed these flyers on last Sunday, I think it was when Parks and Recreation was having the swim program, ceremony, medal ceremony, or closing ceremony. We distributed there. If we succeed, people at Parks and Recreation will help us in organizing that event. So, we are trying our best, and we are going to approach different churches and different ethnic groups. Actually, Mr. Weaver, I was hoping that I can solicit your help in securing a Filipino entertainment group for the event.
No, just the person.
I thought you did. Thank you.
He serves on one of our commissions.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Carolyn McEwen, followed by the tag team of Jillian Van Miden and Mike Haney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Members, Mr. Starbird, and Management Staff. My name is Carolyn McEwen. I'm Community Services Manager with Human Services Division of Parks Recreation and Community Services Department. An extreme heat advisory has been issued for this coming weekend, and so I just wanted to remind the community that our cooling stations will remain open throughout the weekend and as long as the heat is still high. Our cooling stations are at the Adult Recreation Center at 201 East Colorado and at Spar Heights Community Center at sixteen thirteen Glenco Way. They're open nine AM to four PM, seven days a week, as long as the heat is high, and we're also serving our hot meals program to seniors and the disabled. The cooling stations provide air conditioning, ice water, entertainment, games, movies, just a kind of a respite from the heat for those who don't have air conditioning or need to get into a cooler environment. In addition, because of the heat advisory that's been released, although many city facilities will be closed on Monday in observance of Labor Day, the cooling stations will remain open again from nine AM to four PM. We'll be serving our hot lunch program, and if any community members have questions, they can call eight one eight five four eight three seven seven five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that information on the website?
It will be.
It will be.
Okay. Okay, the tag team match, followed by Paula Devine, tag team match with Jolene Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Jolene Van Miden, and I work for the City of Glendale City Attorney's Office, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff. I'm here to talk about the Glendale Relay for Life, which is coming up on October seventh through eighth. It's going to be at the Glendale Sports Complex. We're just about a month away, and we're in the final push for fundraising, team formation. I'm the team development coordinator, and so what I would say to you all, if you're not on a team or you haven't joined, it is time to join, to form, and if you can't do that, at a minimum, to at least donate to this very important cause. As you probably already know, the Relay for Life is the American Cancer Society's primary means of fundraising throughout the United States. Eighty percent of the funds for the American Cancer Society come from this fundraising effort. And what's important to know, because many people who are donating their funds and their time to these causes, they're getting hit up constantly to donate money, are concerned about where that money goes. And I wanted to let you know, and this is important, that over seventy-five percent of the funds that are raised go to patient care, to research and development, and that's really critical, that only, only twenty-five percent of those funds go to funding the fundraising efforts and the administrative efforts. So, that, I think, is very important to know, that the vast majority, seventy-five percent, go actually to those patients and to that research. We do have a long way to go in a very short time to reach our goal, and so it's time for everyone to overcome any feelings of complacency they might have about being involved. It's very important. And you might ask, why am I involved? Well, all I have to do is pause for a moment and think about the number of people, the family and the friends that I have that have been touched, devastated by this disease. And I know it would only take anyone here a moment to think of the people that they know as well, and that this is a curable disease, and we're here to try and do something about it, and that's what this effort of Relay for Life is all about. And so I would encourage you to, to think about that, and then to put forth your efforts, whether it's through joining a team, forming a team, contacting individuals or organizations that can sponsor this event, or just simply by donating your time or your money. It is all appreciated. I'd encourage you to check this out, the website, it's www.cancer.org. You can link through that website to the Glendale Relay for Life. I also want to let everyone here know that I have team member packets, so I'd encourage those of you that aren't on teams to go ahead and pick one of these up on, on the way out and to sign up and to join this fabulous event. I'll turn it over to Mike Haney.
So, Mr. Haney does?
He does.
Yeah. Thank you, Jolene. I am Mike Haney, one of the tri-chairs of the Relay for Life that's October seventh. I want to thank the mayor and all the council person, council members, Mr. Starbird for his leadership, and Linda Patrick and Harold Scoggins and all our committee. I mean, we are really committed to the Relay for Life, and like Jolene said, we're one month away, and cancer touches all our lives in so many ways, and this is a great event. It's a great community event, and I challenge all of us sitting here today and everybody's watching that you can all participate in this, either through participation yourselves or with money. And we have so many ways that you can help with sponsorships, volunteers, teams. This is our third year. Our goal this year's two hundred thousand. Last year, we raised a hundred and fifteen thousand. Our first year, we raised forty-seven thousand. And it's really a great event. It's very festive. We have a lot of activities up at the event. This year, it's going to be at the Glendale Sports Complex off of Fern Lane. We had it the last few years at Shoal Canyon, but this year, it's going to be at Glendale Sports Complex, and we really appreciate all the support that you and the city and the mayor and all the council members and Mr. Starbird and everybody that gives to this event, because it's a great cause, and I appreciate your time and effort. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, Paula Devine and Jolene Taylor. Followed by Herbert Milano.
Mr. Mayor, City Council staff, my name is Paula Devine, and this is Jolene Taylor, and we're both here to give everybody a fun way to raise money for the American Cancer Society and Relay for Life. We happen to be co-captains of Hope Rises Two. Last year, we were Hope Rises. This year, we are Hope Rises Two. And the fundraiser that we're hosting is at Farniente Restaurant. They have graciously donated dinner, twenty dollars for an entree, salad, dessert, five dollars extra for a glass of wine, which is a real deal. But if you haven't been to Farniente, and I say this to the community, please come. They have wonderful food, and this is going to be a wonderful evening. They're donating a portion of all of the dinners to our team, and plus, we have other activities going on, which Jolene will tell you about.
At that evening, we also have silent auction and opportunity drawing items, which range from dinner for two at Lowry's, weekend for two at the Peninsula Beverly Hills with IT, to the International House of Pancakes. Everybody can participate in the drawing and the silent auction, and I think it's after the same date as the Friendship Games, so after the Friendship Games.
You can go from the awards ceremony right over to Farniente.
Right. And the date again is September twenty-fourth, from five thirty to eight thirty. Farniente is located at two oh four and a half North Brand Boulevard.
And if you'd like to call for reservations, the number is two four two three eight three five. So, I hope to see everybody here, hopefully, at Farniente, and everyone out in the audience, the community, there to support Relay for Life and Hope Rises. And I'm here with two hats tonight, because I have another invitation for.
Is it only on September twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
Just one night from five thirty to eight thirty.
Five thirty to eight thirty. Very good. Thank you.
So, it's kind of perfect timing with the Friendship Games, and since my former, in my former life, I was a PE teacher, I'd like to referee that game, that basketball game that you're going to be in. Anyway, that's aside. The second reason that I'm here is on behalf.
There'll be a lot of fouls, I think.
No, I allow a pretty loose game. We'll let you play. The Commission on the Status of Women is having a mixer fundraiser, which I'm inviting all of you to. It is for Habitat for Humanity, and I think if anybody's been watching the news today, there have been a lot of reports on what Habitat is doing in New Orleans, building like, I think they're building a hundred right now, and they have two hundred on the way, so it's wonderful. But we have a project here in Glendale, the Kenwood Project, and the commission is trying to help a women's team build one of those eleven homes. And so we invite you to come and meet the women from Habitat, and also meet fellow, our commissioners, old ones, new ones, and just if you stop in for five minutes and show some support for the Commission on the Status of Women, it is on September the eighth. It is at the Divine House, and it's from five thirty to seven thirty. And we'd appreciate all the commissioners and board members.
What house is it again?
Casa Divina, the Divine House. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Next speaker, Herbert Milano, followed by Dicker, Dr. Richard Espirito.
Good evening. My name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Weaver, members of the City Council, city staff. The state of developed parkland south of the one thirty-four freeway has finally, is finally coming front to center in front of you and in the public. Last week, we had a detailed analysis of the extreme shortage of parkland in the City of Glendale. We had that analysis done by one of the consultants you hired with regard to the park impact fees. We had a discussion just recently on the downtown specific plan with the issues of open space and parkland being primary to that. We had the release of the draft environmental impact report on the ER on downtown, and I figured that by now, you have received a significant amount of information with regard to the shortage of parkland south of the one thirty-four freeway. I've looked at this problem for a long time, as you know, and I've spoken about it, and it's been an uphill fight, a significant uphill fight, and it's my hope that it no longer continues to be, but it's wishful thinking on my part, I guess, because by looking at what happened last week, the presentation that you had before you by the consultants talking about the need for parkland in support of the environment, the impact fees, I think that the term that was used here was hostile. The consultant was asked some very pointed and harsh questions, I think, more so than I have seen any other consultant who's come before you. That's my interpretation of it. And the contrast is when Mr. Rodney Khan came before you, and you all turned into smiles, and the banter changed, and it was friendly. And I look at that, those two, and my interpretation is, you know, are we really going to look towards the issue of open parkland and improve the shortage? I read the environmental impact report, the draft environmental impact report, and I have a couple pages here on it, chapter six, where it talks about the recreation element, and here are two lines from it. It says, "Implementation of the proposed project will result in increased use of parks and recreational facilities, such that deterioration could occur." I wish that the words were different. I wish that the words were something along the lines that the consultant gave last week, that there is going to be a ratio of one thousand residents for one-third acre of parkland, and consequently, as you grow this area of downtown, the need continues to be excessive. You know, it's an oppressive area. You see, when I read this environmental impact reports, I am reminded that even though it's our attempt to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, that that particular law has no teeth, that unless the public files a lawsuit under CEQA, nothing will happen. So, you can write whatever you want in all of these reports, unless we take action, collect money, and file a lawsuit, things will continue as they are. And it is my hope that finally, the members of the City Council who ran for office last time, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Weaver, and Mr. Yusefian, and Mr. Quintero, that you fulfill the promise that you gave to us in December, two years ago, when you were running, and that was that you will look towards supporting and expansion of the Central Park as a place for us to finally have a respite, a urban park of quality, similar to the quality urban park that I showed you earlier concerning Bryant Park in New York. We have an extremely narrow opportunity here to create something big. Bryant Park in New York is bounded by the New York Central Library, and it is a place for entertainment, it is a place for culture, it's a place where the whole community comes together. We've got roughly about three acres surrounding our central library. We can create something truly significant. For those individuals who want to see a visual of what can be done, bryantpark.org, Bryant as B-R-Y-A-N-T, park.org. Take a look at it, because I think that if something like this does not move you to wish that you had something like that, nothing will. Well, your promises, I hope, will, you know, hold you to, to that commitment, and I hope that you look at it, because all the documentation that we have is about that. And I tell you that if we have to resort to a lawsuit under CEQA to obtain it, then I think that should stop a lot of the projects. We need to address it. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Dr. Richard Espirito, followed by Barry Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council staff, and the audience. I am Dr. Richard Espirito. This evening, my presentation is going to be called Through the Looking Glass. I don't want you to get this confused with the organization that was formed in nineteen eighty-two in Berkeley, California, that was a ADA program to help families with disabilities. This book was written in eighteen seventy-one by Charles Ludwig Dogson. His pen name was Louis Carroll. He's more famous for writing a book called Adventures of Alice in Wonderland. Through the Looking Glass was his second book, and Mr. Carroll was also famous as a mathematician. And, next slide, please. This is in regards to the Federal Telecommunication Act. Briefly, it says, "Originally enacted as part of the Americans with Disability, the law deals with telephones and television access for people with hearing and speech disabilities." Goes on further at the bottom to say, "As of January first of two thousand and six, and thereafter, one hundred percent of programs distributed, new non-text video programs must be provided with capitation." That's the new federal law. Channel TV six does not provide that service. I understand that it's on the works sometime in the near future, but that's fine. If we take a look at what happened with the site survey that was done back in nineteen ninety-four, and the fact that I had requested from the city what had happened with the recent one, I think we have a, I'd like to know what's going on with that. Chapter two, which is entitled The Garden of Living Flowers. This is an interesting chapter, because it talks about Alice talking with flowers. Mr. Mayor, City Council, people with disabilities, if they have a mobile disability, if they have a visual disability, they have a hearing disability, they are deserving of the rights of everybody. These people have the essential capabilities of becoming part of this, of a community. For sake of argument, an individual such as Ludwig Beethoven, who was deaf from early childhood, became a well-known composer. Are we going to deny an individual of that nature the ability to participate within city government? Doesn't people who have hearing disabilities have a right to sit at home, either watch the computer, watch it on TV, and know? I do not think people with a disability have—are able to watch TV and have a hearing disability and watch, read lips, and see what is being said. We don't have a translator. I think it's very important that we take this in consideration, and I think one of the things that we have to do is, in the near future, take a look at this issue, just as Mr. McFaul had done a great job in making our agendas in the City Council chambers accessible for people with disability. And I also need to give a great thanks to Mr. Arti Kasakian for his efforts that he provided in that effort also. I thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Next speaker, Barry Allen, followed by Al Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, and the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. The—as item 9A has been pulled from the agenda, I guess we can talk about it, and that has to do with the impact fees. After reading the documentation about the impact fees, I made a determination, of course, it's going to be a very, very emotional issue. Everybody's going to want more libraries and more open space and more parkland. The only thing that the impact fees will do will provide the acquisition of parkland, open space, and libraries. It doesn't provide for the operation. Now, today, we have seven libraries, open total of, what, 220 hours a week? Seven libraries, 220 hours a week. The one on Chevy Chase is open 11 hours a week. We can't even keep the libraries open 10, 12 hours a day, six days a week, or seven days a week. So where are we going to generate that money from? Once we have this $200 million, $300 million, of course, a lot of that will be spent for salaries and payroll and consultants that will tell us how else we can spend money. Because in this city, money really doesn't mean anything. I know we had a few words last week about the portfolio—the investment portfolio losing a net worth of about $86 million in 13 months, according to the portfolio report itself, whether it went for $6 million for open space, but we have that open space, but we're not able to use it. So where are we going to get the operational money? What are we really going to be funding with impact fees? The public is not aware. They just say, "Oh, we need more of this, and we need more of that." They don't have the numbers. They don't have the information. We hear Mr. Milano very frequently up here asking for the outcomes—not just the output, but the outcomes of what we're doing with our funds. Where are they going? We heard earlier today the reserves of water being cut from 20 million to 10 million. Last week, Mr. Councilmember Menuchyan asked Mr. Ayers about the $9 million being transferred from depreciation funds of the GWP to operational funds. So what's going to happen when we need that money to replace the infrastructure that we're attempting to replace? How many times can we afford the breakdowns of the electrical system that runs down Brand, that runs down Central, that is going to be operating all of these new libraries and these new parks? We don't have it. I'm willing to bet that about two years, or next year, we'll be seeing a huge bond issue that will be going up to provide a whole new infrastructure. So what are the impact fees going to do? How many of these developers are going to be chased out of town? You know, I made the comments. I'm not opposed to the development. I know we need traffic mitigation. I also know that some of these developments look good. The only comments that I have made under Vanguard in the past have touched upon the issue of the campaign contributions that these developers felt they had to make. And now we're coming back and asking these same developers to dig deeper into their pockets for, what, $14,000, $20,000, $24,000 a unit? They're going to walk away. But then again, we'll be able to buy some of that space that Wilson and Brand would make a gorgeous park, and we could just take that through eminent domain and put that park that Mr. Milano also talks about. But these are some emotional times that we're going to come into, and emotions are easily manipulated. And I certainly hope that the council and staff doesn't take advantage of their ability to manipulate the emotions of the people who will be coming here. Now, I've had some complaints that people can't read the phone number of the Vanguard. It's there, 243-1502. Hopefully, this will do it, and call us anytime except now, and we'll be able to get your information, get you on our Vanguard news list. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Starbird, Mr. Mayor, and the public and the council.
Next speaker, Al Murray.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff, and the people of Glendale, I'm Al Murray, president of Glendale Old Timers Association. Come celebrate 100 years of history at the Glendale Old Timers Association annual picnic. It's on September 4th, Monday, Labor Day. That's this coming Monday, Labor Day, at 10:30 to 3:00 at the Casa Adobe de San Rafael on Dorothy Drive, 1330 Dorothy Drive. Pack your picnic basket and come to Casa Adobe de San Rafael. Check up with old friends and Glendaleans, meet the city council members, other local and state representatives, enjoy entertainment and music, free coffee and ice water. All you have to do is bring your picnic lunch. And don't forget, lots of fabulous door prizes and opportunity prizes. So please come to the picnic this coming Monday. We'll have all—all have a good time, and flowers are on the back table back there. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
What time is it again?
It's 10:30 to 3:00. The program will start at 11:00. So—and Larry Zarian will be our master ceremony this year.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Another good watering station on that day. Next speaker—I hope I say it right—Zamont Simon or Simon? Correct me, how do you say it?
Zamont Simon.
Almost, huh?
Okay. Good evening, city of Glendale. Sorry, I want to speak Armenian.
I have a housing issue. My husband has had heart surgery. He does not work. I'm the only one in the household that works.
I applied for Section 8 eight years ago, and I have been placed on a waiting list.
My son is 19 and is in college. My daughter is too young to work. My son is 19, is a college student, and can't work, and I'm a home caregiver, which doesn't give enough to sustain the family. And I receive welfare from the government.
Every six—to seven months, the rent in our apartment continues to rise.
The rent just went up another $75, and it's now $1,075 a month. I implore you, now, where do I find the money to make these payments? My son's in college, my daughter's 11 years old, my husband is ill. How do I make this work? What do I do? Twice he applied for disability, and twice they've denied him. They told him to apply to Social Security. When he applied to Social Security, they have not yet—they have yet to receive a response. I implore you for assistance. Thank you.
Arti, would you ask her if she's talked to anybody on our staff committee housing and development?
When she spoke to Housing Services here in our city, the division that administers Section 8, and said that her husband is unable to work, her points that she's accumulated for—to qualify for Section 8 housing was increased by one point, and this was approximately two months ago.
Arti, would you tell her to give us your phone number?
Mr. Mayor, I—she—she handed me some information. I handed it to the director of Community Development and Housing, and I'm sure they will contact her.
Okay. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker will be Timothy Catledge.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Timothy Catledge.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Tim Catledge, and I want to discuss this problem that we are having in Glendale for the last few years. We get a flood of people coming in from a foreign country because of the Refugee Act of '72, '73. And, you know, we're Americans, we're giving, loving people. It's like when we do good deeds—what is that expression? No good deed goes unpunished. So the people we expect to come here, we don't tell them we don't give them any restrictions or anything like that, what to do. We just expect them to be good old Americans, you know, learn our language, you know, be good citizens, be friendly with other people, you know, mix in, assimilate. And all these years, and I'm speaking of the Armenian people, they seem to don't want to get in line with the rest of the ethnic groups. They don't want to be friendly to us Americans. They don't want to assimilate into the language. This lady comes up here, she speaks a little English, she's like, "Oh, I want to speak in Armenian right away." And if you're going to ask for something for the council, you still should be able to speak the language, the English language, the country that we allowed you to come into. We didn't ask for you to give anything back to us, but you haven't. I haven't seen anything, any Armenian was given back to the city of Glendale in all these years I've been here.
I think that's a pretty far-out statement, Mr. Catledge, and I'm—I appreciate your right, your First Amendment right to speak, but I think you're bordering on hate speech. And if I personally think you're getting to that—
Well, that's your—that's your assumption inside your mind.
Well, you haven't crossed the line yet, but I think you're getting awful close. I'm going to ask you to please get away from hate—
I'm not—
—and try and speak constructively.
That's your perception, not my perception.
Well, that could be the perception of many people, Mr. Catledge. I keep my eye on the city attorney to know—let me know when you've crossed over that boundary of free speech.
Right. Now, back to this act, and I think that if—if you Armenians want to assimilate, if you're here for a reason, assimilate into our—if not to assimilate in our culture, and you've got all these groups, which—you're talking about hate groups. They may not be hate groups, but they're borderline prejudice groups, when you have all these different separatist groups, Armenian groups around here, that only caters to themselves. Like this recently, Armenian high school, because we don't—because you don't have a Armenian high school.
Mr. Catledge, the attorney's leaning forward now. I think you're going a little too far. This is not helping unity in this community by the things you're saying.
This is the truth. This was in the news press, Armenian high school.
I know all about that, but the general tone of your conversation is destructive to the community and further divides us. So I would strongly suggest, even though you have First Amendment rights, that you refrain from saying what you're saying here on television that goes around the world. I just—I think it's inappropriate.
No, I'm just telling the truth.
You may be, but I'm just telling you, use your words with caution, because the city man—city attorney is leaning forward and getting close to having to cut you off, whether you like it or not. So please be careful on your—the words you're choosing and how it affects the community as a whole.
Please be constructive. You may have a message, but don't do it in a negative way. Be constructive and give us hope. Tell us where we should go.
Okay, well, let's start speaking the language. Let's start speaking English, okay? This is America, right? You speak English, and you try to be friendly to your fellow man. And I walked these streets for years and years, and when people don't even look at me and put their head down like that, you know, and I'm looking at them, trying to be friendly to everybody, I don't get that from the Asian people, I don't get that from Filipinos, I don't get that from Hispanic people, you know?
But you have to understand, people are different from different cultures. Their mannerisms, how they act, are different in different cultures. I was lucky enough to be born here. I speak good English, no other language. Others come here and they don't speak the language. You can't expect them to arrive here and have the ability to go to classes, whatever, to learn the language immediately and be fluent. English is a very difficult language to learn if you weren't brought up in it. I could not go to Armenia and speak. I don't know Armenian. I don't even know my wife's Tagalog, and she's Filipino. So, you know, just because they don't understand the language here, I don't think you can draw the conclusion they don't like if they put their heads down. I don't think you can draw a conclusion there either.
Bad people is just that they—you know, they're not getting into our culture, they're not assimilate.
Well, I can see how you feel that, but we're a multicultural society today.
Mr. Mayor, time is—
Yeah, I mean—
Well, we took some of his time, so I—
Yeah, I'm going to go. You see, we have 86 languages spoken—or 68 languages spoken in our school system. I grew up, there was basically one language spoken in the school system, and that was English. This city has dramatically changed in the last 50 years, and it's going to continue to change. But to draw conclusions about different ethnic groups simply based on your observations, while you can feel that way, and there may be others that feel like you, I think it's wrong to go out and publicly say it on television to the whole city. You're just inciting people to come out in opposition. We've had this many times over my years on council, where people will stand here and say something, and all it does is generate hate in the letters to the editor of the press and other people coming up here and condemning what the other speaker said. And we really don't need that in this community, not when we're trying to bridge the gap and bring all these different ethnic groups together. And we really don't need that in this community, not when we're trying to bridge the gap and bring all these different ethnic groups together. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, but, but one thing, if we got, if the Armenian population keeps increasing in this city, then what do you think's gonna happen?
Well, I don't know that. I don't know that.
Something's gonna happen. Oh, somebody, is the sensitivities around there? Something's gonna happen.
I think we have, I think this city is working very diligently.
Mr. Mayor, I think his time is up and, uh,
I know, but I'm allowing-
Everyone in this city is an American, just for your information, and that's the only statement I need to make. What language they speak is their language, is their choice.
I've chosen as the mayor to, to go talk with him a little more than I usually do. Thank you for your time, sir. Last speaker, and I hope I don't butcher this name, Moradu, Moraduva Goharic? Goharic?
Moradova-
Moraduva Goharic. Let's see if I said it right when she gets up here. Artie, she may need, uh, a translator. Ask her if I said it right, her name right.
Moradova Gohar? Um, she has made requests as she's made to get into council chambers and meet with Mr. Councilmember Menucha and others. She has not been able to see anyone. She's here again to implore for assistance in housing. She's on disability, she's on medication and is, um, unable to, uh, receive this assistance. Um, there's apparently an issue of her having five points, which I believe is the maximum points for the housing, and she's been lowered, or she says that they're, she's, they're threatening to lower her points to four points, or downgrade her to four points, and she reiterated the fact that she's on disability and, um, you know, had, lives by meager means, um, not even a bed to sleep on, sleeps on the couch in her apartment.
Artie, did you say we're threatening to lower?
I believe I translated that as accurately. There is the threat of the points being lowered to four points, or be, her being downgraded to four points.
Okay, that's different.
She says that she doesn't have anyone here, um, she's all alone. And in fact, uh, she had to get a ride here to City Hall to make it to this council meeting, um, through the assistance of the grandchild of her neighbor. Uh, she is saying that, "I'm a seventy-year-old woman, I need assistance," you know, she's, "I, I implore you for assistance, I need help."
Mr. Starbird, I believe she's been here before.
All I can say, Mr. Mayor, is she has been in touch with community development housing. As you know, uh, they work with lots and lots of individuals in this condition. Uh, there are literally thousands of people on the waiting list. It sounds like she has been adjusted on the list. But at the end of the day, we have, uh, few section eight vouchers and lots of people, uh, who need assistance. I know the staff will continue to work with her. But the prospect is if she's availed herself to the various programs, and I suspect she has, there's not a great deal more that we can do with respect to her status for section eight housing.
Would you thank her, Artie, for coming down?
And, and she should stay in touch, in touch with our community development and housing staff, but at, at this point, that's about all we can do.
Um, she's saying that, you know, she's, uh, she's ill, she's unable to remain in regular contact with the city, and, uh, her rent, which was seven hundred, has been raised yet another hundred dollars. She says, "What are my choices? Should I just stop eating? Is that what they want me to do?"
Mr. Starbird, if you could reiterate that, certainly the, the council is sensitive to the, the severe financial problems that, that most, if not all, of the ten thousand folks on the waiting, uh, who are applying for section eight have. But we have to instruct community development and housing to strictly go on the, the point system and the merit system. If we were to listen to everyone's hardship, there'd be no way we could make, make a decision by giving priority.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Najarian, um, you get many contacts like this, both at this meeting, I know at your, at your offices personally. Our community development and housing staff is very caring. As you know, they work very closely with, with literally the thousands of individuals, uh, that come for assistance. Uh, I would imagine they have directed her to programs that she can take advantage of, to the extent she's eligible. Uh, I know that they have reviewed her status on the waiting list, and to the extent there's justification, we'll adjust her priority. But again, uh, I think, uh, it's likely we have done all we can do, but we'll continue to work with her to the extent that we can. And Artie, if you can summarize that quickly? I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll try, but with the permission of the mayor and the council, I'll do that off microphone.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank her very much.
Thank you very much. Merci.
Thank you. Yeah, read them. Next time they're working, then you can speak with her.
At eight A, action items is director of information services regarding non-exclusive franchise for citywide wireless network. At eight A one resolution, adopting requests for proposals and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
I'm going to Mr. Starbird, who's gonna go to-
I'm gonna go to Emelda Beckham, Director of Information Services.
Who's gonna tell us in layman terms what this means, so the public can understand.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. We are basically here to request, can, I hope I'm doing this right, to request that you approve the resolution that we, uh, attached to the report in which we want to move forward in releasing an RFP to the industry to, um, to basically enter into negotiations with a, with a vendor that would provide a wireless network for the city of Glendale.
Okay, and explain what an IP wireless network is, how, what is the advantage to the city, the people, whatever? Give an example. If you have a laptop computer-
Is this a citywide wireless network?
Yes, and-
Why are we doing this? Why do we need to do that?
The idea is, cities do it for multiple reasons, and, uh, we had, when we originally thought of, uh, of, um, moving forward with a wireless network, we did it, the main driver was, uh, public safety. They needed a way to, to write reports and, um, access data from the field. We needed to enable mobility to the, to the applications, the software packages that they currently use to support their operation. So, we had, uh, sought funding for that. As, as the industry, uh, and, not the industry, as, as a series of events unfolded that, in which cities began to seek partnerships with vendors to basically, um, achieve the same thing that we were trying to, to achieve.
Our investment would be much more if we tried to do internally.
We expect to invest, uh, a minimal amount.
Minimal amount?
Yes.
Because we're going out and letting the, uh, whoever we solicit, uh, do the cost installation, using our system as a backbone-
Exchange for our assets.
Like that. But I'm looking to explain, if I have a laptop and I want to go from office to office or go around town, what are the advantage that I would have with the system that I don't have now? I have a laptop with a program on, and I want to go from this office to that office, out of the building to another office. I understand right now it's much more complicated than it would be under an IP wireless system.
The options that you have right now, together with other people here in the city, are either you have, uh, wired services to access the internet, which is DSL cable.
Artie, into, into the wall.
Yes, and, um, if you want to add mobility to that, then you will go into either specific areas in the city that have hotspots, if you will, that, where you can base, uh, coffee houses, libraries, some of them are for free, the libraries-
Have to go there and log in again.
And log in right there.
New number and dial or whatever.
And that, and you will have, um, access to the network in a radius covered by, by-
But that's all you would have.
Exactly. And then you have another option, I'm sorry.
Now, if you go to the wireless, you're not being tied down to one node, so to speak. You can move anywhere in the city.
Yes, and there, there are, there is a provider right now that allows you to do exactly that. And, uh, as a matter of fact, we are using the services of that service provider to, to move around the city, uh, for about sixty dollars a month. And, um, so it's quite high compared to the, to what-
So if you can move around all the city, that would mean like a police officer has a laptop computer in his, uh, police car, could stop anywhere and file reports away from any central location.
I thought they could do that currently.
They-
Within a node area.
Well, right now they have, uh, they have, um,
They have to get near a fire station.
Which is the, the radio communication system that includes a data network.
Right.
And that allows them, uh, that gives them access to, to some city systems as well as some state systems. And so they access information as well, but it doesn't give them access to, to everything that they need access to. Some of the other applications that we support in the city are static and local to city facilities and, and the coverage of the city network. If we want to give them mobility and, and actually access those applications such as the, the records, um, I forgot, RMS, records management system, then we have to go on a different, um, wireless provider.
I've been trying to understand this, that a company wants to move to Glendale, and they said it's city wireless, and I said, "What do you mean? Are we wireless?" I'm trying to learn, and I guess, I'm beginning to understand why the term wireless means that you can be anywhere in the city with a laptop
Like a blanket.
And you can hook in to virtually anything, internet or whatever. It's totally different. Mr. Pintero?
How, uh, when you go out for the RFP, is it gonna go, will this RFP be mailed or sent to everyone in this, uh, business? Or are we gonna focus on just a few companies?
There are a number of players in the, in the industry and, uh-
There are many players in the industry, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, and, uh, we plan to mail it as well as make it available on, on request.
Okay.
But we are gonna have it, uh, published for, from now till, if, with your approval, from now till November. And as, uh, um, the city attorney's office said, we are testing the waters. We are-
Okay, well, that was my next question, and that is, how long is the RFP gonna be out so that we give everyone a level playing field and there's plenty of opportunity for everyone to explore? I'd hate to have it a short period of time and then we get a limited amount of, uh, of response.
That was exactly our fear too. We want to give them plenty of time. So we thought from now till first week of November or so would be sufficient time.
Well, that's not very long. We're in the, at the end of August.
People have been knocking on our doors already, so they have done a lot of, vendors have done a lot of-
Have knocked on your doors.
Research.
How many have been doing research?
Um, two come to mind, two of the key players.
Okay, well, I would, uh, like to do it past, uh-
Past November?
Yeah, I'd like to do it past November, at least to November thirtieth. At least to say Thanksgiving weekend, to give everyone plenty of opportunity. And then obviously what we're after is to be able to have business and residents use the wireless, uh, systems if they're at a city park or they're at, uh, wherever they, they may be, correct?
Yes, and the idea would be to have, uh, several tiers of pricing, uh, because one of the, the drivers is, uh, dealing with some of the so-called digital divide issues, which of course, that's a totally separate program in and of itself, but-
And then finally, I think everyone has to be warned that the problem with wireless is unless you have a tremendous, uh, Norton antivirus or some other type of, uh, situation in your computer, people that are sitting next to you in that park could be, uh, sort of listening in to all of your, uh, all of your work. So that's one of the issues with it, I think, uh, not for us to worry about, but just for people in general when they, when they do these things in public settings. But I think it's a great idea. I mean, I'm really, uh, impressed that we're gonna go out and do it. It's about time. There's lots of other cities throughout the world that have it, and so I think it's great. That AT&T thing we did, yeah, last week and now this, the more competition, the better, the more alternatives people have, the better, so it's a good idea. But let's just give everyone a good chance. I'd hate to have just one or two companies respond to the RFP and then all of a sudden we're kind of in a, in a corner. Let's let everyone, uh, and how about the RFP itself? It's already been written and so forth.
We brought some copies, if you were interested in seeing.
Okay, Mr. Menucha and then Mr. Najarian and then Mr. Starbird.
So if, uh, individuals want to, uh, get the service, they would have to pay for a service? It's like a-
It's, uh-
Residents of Glendale or whoever wants to use the service, they would, uh, have to pay a certain amount every month, just like DSL, certain speeds?
Right, that's the idea. And, uh, some cities like San Francisco actually came up with a zero cost tier or, uh, where the price is basically, well, where there, it's for free.
For the whole community forever?
The whole community, and, uh, but with, with, then there are some disadvantages that go with, uh, with anything free. And, uh, part of the, the added services that you get with more expensive tier, uh, levels or with the tiers are increased security, anti-spam on your, on your-
And what are, what are the tiers usually? What are the fees in general?
Well, uh, it's been changing, but, uh, what, what I have seen, and I don't know, I'll ask Steve to, to chime in, but essentially Steve Ronick, uh, who is overseeing this project, but I've seen, uh, what the vendors have been discussing in conferences that, that I have attended is, um, they basically talk about a twenty dollars a month.
Okay.
Pricing for, for-
And, um, in terms of security of the network of the city, will that be, uh, do we need any additional software to protect the city? Since city employees are gonna be out in the streets using the network to access city documentation and all of that.
I'll ask Steve Ronick to answer that.
Want to step in and get the rest of the questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Yeah, we would have to address that. Um, right now there are technologies that we can use, um, something called a VPN that enables, uh, encryption.
That's, VPN is very difficult though, it's not, VPN is very difficult just for, it's, it's, and it's not conducive for employees to be out in the field and access, uh, the computers at the city through VPN.
Well, we're hoping that, we've addressed security in the, in the RFP. We want, um, along with a business plan and, and the other, uh, attachments that you'll see in this, we're asking for, uh, information regarding what they're gonna do as far as security. And we may have, um, we may set up the, what are IP addresses, the, the way a computer knows where to send traffic. Those may be set up, so if they see a certain IP come in, it goes to the vendor's network into the internet, and another one goes over to the city network. There are a lot of ways to set these up, and technology is advancing constantly, so at this point, um, you know, I could speculate, but, uh, I, I think, uh, it really behooves us to see what kind of responses we get. We certainly though, we absolutely have to take that into consideration, and that's, that's high on our priority list, security.
And you're asking for a non-exclusive franchise?
Correct.
Meaning anyone else can come in? Meaning anyone else can come in and provide that service? So why would, why would any vendor provide a non-exclusive franchise? And why do we need to go out for an RFP for a non-exclusive franchise?
The non-exclusive franchise...
Whoever wants to provide the service, let them provide it. That's fine.
Yeah, that, we want to give, choose a vendor and give them certain benefits by letting them go on city light poles and city facilities and...
So they will be using some city services?
Absolutely, absolutely. Non-exclusive, I believe, and it came from city attorney's office, but I believe we were discussing non-exclusivity because there may be a new technology and a new, you know, provider three, four, five years down the road, and we don't want to have our hands tied that, okay, this is an exclusive franchise, we can't even talk to this new company.
Okay. One more question. There will be some revenues that will be generated by the service to the city, and the suggestion is to augment the city's radio equipment replacement fund. Why the radio equipment replacement fund since it has nothing to do with the internet?
Well, actually, it doesn't have anything to do with the internet.
Or the computers or the network.
Well, it does, computers. All of our mobile computers, all of our mobile data applications come out of that fund.
I understand, but why not augment the internet update or the internet software or the network upgrade fund as opposed to why the city radio equipment fund?
Only because we purchase all of our wireless data equipment for the city out of that fund. We could certainly be, whatever the council directs us to.
It was your idea, right, Steve?
It was, okay, it was my idea.
We purchase all the wireless equipment?
Yeah.
Out of that fund?
Correct.
Why do we do that if it's a radio equipment fund and we've had problems replacing the radio equipment? Why are we replacing wireless?
We include the mobile workstations, the computers in the police cars and fire apparatus, the cards that we're currently using from Verizon for high-speed data or reasonably high-speed data access for police, for the field report writing. All those come out of that fund.
Do we know in general what kind of funds are we talking about?
At this point, I wouldn't expect, I would expect more...
10 million a year?
No, I would expect more.
20?
Oh, I wish. No, I would expect more in the way of services coming to the city than actual funds.
Okay. Mr. Najarian, do you mind if Mr. Starbird jumps ahead of you?
I will, I will yield to the esteemed... Only because of this current issue of funding, and I'd recommend you not approve nor direct necessarily where the proceeds, if there are any, will go at this point. Let us bring you back a policy recommendation on that. I guess I must have missed this point in the report, and credit Steve for trying to protect the areas that he's responsible for. But at the end of the day, the various city funds, including the general fund, all end up supporting those funds. And I'm a little reluctant to see revenues like this being earmarked for one specific place, but instead should be made, decisions like that should be made on a broader basis, giving consideration to all the funds of the city and the fact the general fund probably provides a lion's share. So I'd recommend, one, you not, you not spend a lot of time focusing on that, and two, not approve that policy at this moment.
Okay. I have one more issue, Mr. Mayor. And I've talked about this in the past, and nothing, I have no questions, just a comment to the city manager. I've asked that the reports that are being prepared, the summary be actually be the summary of what is being prepared. And if you look at this report, there's about a page of summary and the background information is about two paragraphs. And I see that consistently throughout the report. Sometimes the summaries are so extensive that the background really doesn't cover anything. I would, I would like to see the summaries truly reflect a summary.
Really be a summary.
Yes.
I agree.
And in terms of both points, the points that are being covered and then in the background, the information that, and the detail that is necessary.
Yeah, the bulk of this summary should have been in the background and the various points that they'd asked for action on part of the recommended actions. Point well taken.
Sometimes the repetition, you read it in the summary, you read it in the background. Don't need to repeat. Okay, Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good idea to go out for the RFP. I think it puts Glendale in a certain elite league of cities that are technologically advanced and savvy. Actually, perhaps during one of our study sessions, that I personally stumbled across this when we were talking about ways to obtain extra funding. And we talked about the Wi-Fi. I didn't even know what it was called back then, but I was informed that it's Wi-Fi. So I'm certainly interested in seeing if there's going to be any financial benefit to the city. I think that would be a very, perhaps the primary concern. But as well as some other issues which may not be issues at all, I'm, I'd like to know if there's any aesthetic impacts on these towers or nodes or the manner in which the wireless signals are broadcast, as well as any health and safety issues. I know every once in a while, the issue of the EMFs, electromagnetic fields pop up. We hear it with the cell phone towers, et cetera. Please keep us up to date. This may be a non-issue or it may be a resurging issue, but please, when we, when you do come back, give us the latest update on the issues involving the EMFs as well.
We will.
Okay, I do have one speaker. Thank you. Barry Allen, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. Actually, Wi-Fi is something that Pauline Field campaigned on when she was running for city council. And since that time, two years ago, things have, the technology has changed, and I would hope that the city of Glendale follows cities like Long Beach and one of the first along Lake Michigan that put in the first Wi-Fi system for a population of about 12,000. And we've watched it grow and expand. Right now, there are many players in the field. Vanguard uses IP addressable video cameras and Wi-Fi at about $60 per month for all of the bandwidth that we can use on a 24/7 basis. And it works quite well. It's available, and I would assume that various city departments here are using that type of technology as well. The only fear that I have is if the city gets into it to look at it as another cash cow, they think that could have, would not have a benefit to the population as the cost would go higher than what people can buy them for right now by this type of bandwidth. And I think that's a fear. We've seen what's happened with the fire department and the EMS system taking away from the ambulance providers in the past and where that's going. The, so we have to take a serious look at, is it going to be a cash cow? Is it going to be competitive? And if the city buys into it, even with non-exclusivity, will there still be the chance for competition? And we've seen that right now. Look at the number of hotspots, the Starbucks, the libraries, the car dealerships that offer the same service. And I think before the city goes into it with the RFPs and going out to all of the different companies, that you need to take a look at what the technology is. As we're moving into LEOs, low earth orbit satellites providing internet connectivity, that's another area. And of course, there you have to have a different type of antenna, something that we've researched considerably from one of our clients, Animatronics. We're quite familiar with the technologies and the changes in the technologies as we go day to day. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. Thank you very much.
Move 8:01.
Mr. Starbird, was there anything that we had to adjust when we talked about, then we won't do the policy now? Was there anything in this motion that has to...
No. No, you're only authorizing the RFP to be issued at this point. It'll all come back to you at a later point in time.
Question? Yes, Mr. Menucha.
Do we have Wi-Fi in this, in this building? Do we have wireless network in this building? We do? Could someone get back to me as to logging on because I've been having problems with that?
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Giuseppe?
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. What's next, please?
9 is hearings, and at 9:00 A. is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services Regarding Impact Fees. This item is subject, this subject item has been taken off calendar.
Thank you.
At 9:00 B. is Director of Planning Regarding Amending the Circulation Element of the General Plan by Removing Airway and Beckins Way from the Element. At 9:01 is Resolution Adopting General Plan Amending 2006-04.
It is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. I have no cards. I will close the public hearing. Does council need to discuss this or preserve motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Giuseppe?
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
And 9C is Director of Planning Continued from 7/25/06 Regarding General Plan Amendment Number 2006-02 Update of the Noise Element of the General Plan, Report Submitted on 8/18/06. At 9C1 is motion to continue or to take off calendar.
Take it off calendar. We're generally agreeing.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, we don't need a motion for that.
Well, it's motion to continue or take off. So what are you expecting? Motion?
We recommend off calendar.
Yeah, off calendar.
Take it off calendar.
Anonymous? Off calendar. What's next, please?
Any reports, information, or written communication?
Yes. I move that the City Attorney B...
This is under new business?
New business. At the City Attorney B and hereby is authorized to enter into a retain agreement to utilize legal services of Mayor, Nave, Rebak, Silver, and Wilson to review and advise the city on a personnel matter and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Giuseppe?
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. What's next, please?
Is there a motion to adjourn in memory of...
Joseph Monley.
So moved.